Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 6th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. This is our regular meeting for the month of July, and I would ask the clerk at this point to call the rule. Maureen, you're on mute.
How's that?
Good.
Can you, excuse me, Chairman McGee?
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Here.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua?
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gosson?
Here.
Commissioner Hauser?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Stone? Is expected.
Thank you. We have a quorum. At this point on this July 4th weekend, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all. Thank you very much. I just want to point out to the public who might be watching our meeting on Community TV. This is an official meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. As a result of an executive order signed by the governor several months ago. As a result of the COVID crisis, all the meetings such as this can be held virtually. And that continues through July 15th, although I anticipate that that my executive order will be extended further. But in any event, votes taken, comments made are handled as it would be in person. The meeting is recorded. Any votes that are taken count. Any approvals or disapprovals of projects count, just as though we were sitting in the same room. So I just wanted to point that out for you. Also for members of the public, you'll see on your television screen a telephone number, yes. Where you can call in, you'll get the community studio at the City Hall. And you can participate live in the meeting if you wish. With that, I'm going to open it to public comment. I'm going to ask Sienna if you have received any public comment, either verbal or written relative to this meeting.
If not.
Thank you very much. Item number four is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th, 2020. I'd ask the commissioners if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes. If there are any additions, corrections that you'd like to bring forward. And if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve them.
They're moved.
It has been moved by Mr. Lord. Do we have support?
Support.
And who's the support? Okay, Mr. Stone, good evening, Mr. Stone.
Good evening. Apologies for being late.
No problem at all. Glad you could make it on this beautiful evening.
Glad to be here.
Well, the motion is moved and supported. We'd have the roll call, please.
Lord?
Yeah.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGee?
Here, or yes?
Okay.
Thank you. Number five, appointment of a new planning commissioner, Christian Hauser. Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming that Christian has already been appointed and it's approved by the City Council?
He has, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to introduce Christian for us?
Um, yeah, so Christian was, well, I'll let Christian speak for himself. Like Christian was, we were happy to have Christian onto the Downtown Development Authority. And he had a short tenure there and he expressed an interest in coming to the Planning Commission, and I think his background is really uniquely fitted for some of the stuff that we do. So when the opening came up, it was an easy move and because he's been on the board. Typically, when we appoint somebody, the mayor appointing, then you wait a meeting and have the City Council approve it. But the City Council said, because we'd approved him before. We have the right to do that. So we approved Christian at the last meeting. So he is all set. But I'll let Christian introduce himself.
Welcome, Christian. If you would, take a few minutes and introduce yourself. Sarah, by the way, your microphone is on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McGee. So to everyone, my name is Christian Hauser. I've been a resident of Rochester for it's going probably about seventeen years now or so. We live right downtown, right over on Seventh, that far from the park here. So we enjoy being in the city very much. In my private life, I'm an attorney with an emphasis on construction law. So I represent contractors, owners, builders, developers, subcontractors, and all aspects of public, private, and commercial construction. I'm also a licensed builder, residential builder. So I've fairly tuned into, you know, what is unique about the development process. But more importantly, what the city here that we live in, I have a deep commitment to service. I have a deep commitment to the pride of this city, and I'm very much looking forward to working with all of you. And the only thing I ask is a little bit of indulgence and patience as I catch up and learn the process here internally. But I promise you that although I may be quiet for the first couple of meetings, I will certainly be listening. And I assure you that when I am here, you will have my full undivided attention. I take this position very seriously. So thank you, and I look forward to meeting all of you in person once we're able to have meetings at the City Hall Building.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you very much for, you know, pointing or joining the commission. Your background, I think, is going to be very valuable to us, particularly in some of the more challenging projects that we handle. And we've had a lot of those lately. I think you're going to find several cohorts on the commission here who do work similar to you. So it'll be very interesting to hear all of you, all of you construction professionals as we as we get into some of those issues, talk about these sorts of things. So we welcome you, and we're all available at any time. I had mentioned this to Sarah before because she's also fairly new, but I'd be glad to meet with you in my chairman's role and get you up to speed, give you some pointers here and there. Things to look at, et cetera, et cetera. So feel free to contact me, but I'm sure anyone else here anytime. Welcome.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, and I certainly will reach out to you to get some additional information at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is number six, public hearing for the consideration of a site plan to change existing office space into residential apartments to be located at 134 West University. Adam Planter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Mr. Zatner of Yamazaki Inc. to convert existing office space into residential apartments. The building is located on the north side of West University, west of Main Street, and is zone CBD, which is the central business district. The applicant had previously appeared before the Planning Commission on the first of June this year for preliminary plan consideration and was provided with some feedback for changes to the plan. Since then, the plan has been revised and resubmitted for consideration. I will share the site plan on my screen at this time, so who can follow along? The use is occupied by an existing T-shaped building, which is three stories. The first floor with street frontages occupied by restaurant and medical offices, which are proposed to be retained as is. However, the second story offices and the basement area are to be converted to one and two-bedroom apartments. Now, professional and administrative offices are permitted by right in the CBD district. Upper-story apartments are permitted as a special exception used in the district, subject to the provisions of Section 2111. At the last meeting, a question was raised about how would we address lower-story apartments? Since the ordinance references only upper-story apartments as a special exception use in the central business district, the intent behind that is to allow for storefronts on the main or the street level. The ordinance does not specifically address any use under the ground or in the basement level. Therefore, we believe since the use is permissible in the district and does not violate the intent of the central business district, having basement apartments is a permitted use. With regard to access and vehicle circulation, there are two access drives from university. If you look at the east side, it is an entrance only, and the west side is exit only. There are signs going to be installed and pavement striping to clearly identify the circulation pathway. All of these parking areas and aisles on the west side of the site are designed for two-way movement of vehicles. With regard to pedestrian circulation, the building fronts on university, and there is a variable with sidewalk along its frontage. At a minimum, it is five feet. The various businesses and offices entrances can be accessed off, I will move to, off university versus the south elevation. We need clarification if there is barrier-free access to the building of West University. The access to the building of the rear parking lot side does have barrier-free ramps up here, and it also has barrier-free access in over here. So the question is, is there barrier-free access of West University? Based on ordinance requirements for parking spaces, the total required parking for the site for the restaurant use, the office uses and the proposed apartments is 115 spaces. A note needs to be added to the plan clarifying that there is no dedicated bar area to serve patrons at this restaurant. If there is a dedicated bar area, the required parking goes up. I believe there is no bar, but that is something that needs to be clarified on the site plan. The site includes a total of 124 parking spaces. The parking spaces on the east and west sides of the building are 18 feet deep. The aisle width on the east side is one-way, and it's only 14 feet wide, which is less than the minimum required width of 15 feet. Here, the required parking is 90-degree parking. Typically, minimum required width of the aisle is 22 feet. All we have here is 20 feet. This is an existing nonconformity that the applicant is not altering in any way. Any kind of alteration to it will result in loss of required parking spaces. So we are recommending that the parking configuration on the east and west side of the buildings be allowed to remain as is.
What it would require then is if there was a change, it would be angled parking, so you'd lose spaces?
The problem is we cannot angle the spaces on the south side parking lot, because once you angle it, you will not be able to exit the site. It is a dead end over here. So if you angle it this way, you will not be able to exit the parking lot. You cannot angle it this way, because then you'll have to create a new curb opening over here. There is simply no way to restructure this without losing out the whole bunch of spaces.
Okay.
With regard to dumpster, the site plan shows an existing dual dumpster on the northwest corner of the property. This is a shared dumpster with other businesses that are located here and also owned by the applicant. The applicant has submitted a copy of the shared dumpster agreement, which I believe is on file at the city. With regard to facade changes, I don't know if this is a colored, I don't just colored elevations. There are the black and white elevations, but please, I'll just stay on the side. Little slow. This is the rear of the building. This is the side. And this, the front, which is the university facade. The applicant also made an extensive presentation on the proposed facade renovations at your June 1st meeting. The changes include extensive interior renovations, basically since they're converting the upstairs offices into apartments. They're doing a significant amount of interior renovations. The exterior renovations include addition of decorative fieldstone at the main entrance of West University. Addition of doors for the second-story apartments. Addition of decorative gables to the roofs that are seen here. Addition of fieldstone to support the base pillars in front of the building. If there's a colored elevation that is clearly visible. Addition of window wells on both sides of the building for basement apartments to have light. I had recommended that we present building material colors and samples, even if they just pick it up and show it on screen for the planning commission's review. With regard to lighting, the plan does not include information on proposed lighting, although the applicant stated at the last meeting that there would be five wall-mounted light fixtures. I did receive a manufacturer's cut sheet detail just before the meeting. It is a standard true box type fixture. It is shielded and downward directed. However, it is not a kind of fixture we typically see on downtown buildings. It's more of an industrial-style shoebox fixture. It's just a square block pointing downwards. Our recommendation is since this building is in a downtown area, that a fixture be proposed that is artistically more appealing and in keeping with the rest of downtown. As to landscaping, I will share the landscape plan. If you'll give me one second, I will slide up the landscape plan. Landscape plan and there's the landscape plan. The site plan identifies landscape area along the foundations of the building. Foundations of the building, if you can see over here, this area, and they have along the foundations of the building up on West University. The plan includes notation of existing trees within the landscape islands. If you see, it says existing maple tree, but the size of those trees are not noted. So there is no way for us to determine if they're actually healthy trees or they meet the minimum standards. Based on a review of the aerial images, I tried to go and look at the most updated recent Google Earth images. The landscape island on the northwest corner of the site, which is this one, it's just got an existing burning bush, has got no tree in it. At a minimum, one tree must be planted under the parking ordinance requirements, and it needs to be a shaded deciduous tree. In addition, the ground cover that's in most of these islands appears to be in very poor condition. At the last meeting, the applicant had stated that there is no in-ground irrigation for these islands, and it's basically whatever comes through rain is what takes care of it, but the condition of the ground cover is not, there is a lot of weeds in there. So our recommendation is that a tree be planted on this island, and the ground cover be revised in all of these islands. Either it be hydro seeded with resistant grass species, or they put in some form of hardscape such as mulch or decorative stone. In its present state, it does not look well-maintained. With regard to signage, there is no information regarding proposed signage, so if any new signage is to be installed for the proposed apartments, it must be reviewed and approved by the city administration. Finally, with regard to the upper-story apartments, there are specific standards in Section 2111. And the plan conforms to all of the requirements except with regard to one requirement under that subsection. There is a minimum floor area requirement under Section 2109, which is referred to under the upper-story apartments. It says that all studio apartments must have a minimum floor area of 500 square feet. Now, if you look at Sheet A1 of the elevation sheets, it says that a total of six studio apartments will be there with area between 345 to 604 square feet. All the units that are located in the upper level, because the ordinance specifically references upper-story apartments, they should meet the minimum requirement of 500 square feet. If necessary, any of the smaller studio apartments that are below the 500 can be located at the basement level, but the upper story must conform to the 500 square feet requirement. Based on our review of the site plan, many of the outstanding items have been addressed at this time. So we would recommend that the Planning Commission grant site plan a special exception approval for the proposed facade renovations and addition of upper and lower-story apartments to the existing building located at 134 West University, subject to six conditions. First would be clarification regarding barrier-free access from West University to the building. Addition of a note stating that the restaurant has no dedicated bar area. Revised manufacturer's cut sheet details of a more architecturally suitable light fixture for the building. Addition of a tree to the landscape island, replacement of island ground cover, and notation of a landscape maintenance agreement, ensure that in the future this stays well-maintained. Review and approval of any proposed signage by city staff. And finally, confirmation that all the upper-story studio apartments will meet a minimum floor area requirement of 500 square feet. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Vidya?
Mr. Chairman, should we wait till after the public hearing to ask questions or now?
If you have any directly for Vidya, go ahead. Okay, is the petitioner available? Or representative?
Yes.
Yes.
If you would, you have the floor here for a few minutes before I open the public hearing.
Yeah, this is Robert Sander from Yamazaki. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, just in response to some of these issues that were raised here. The, in terms of the barrier-free access from us university, currently the building has two steps up to the the main floor level, or what we're calling the second floor level from university. On the backside, it's actually six steps or about three and a half to four feet on the north side of the building. So barrier-free access is limited currently to the west side of the building, and the east side actually complies, but there's no barrier-free parking on that side currently. So that is the current condition of the building and what we're proposing to maintain. The restaurant doesn't have a dedicated bar area for service, and we'll make sure that's added onto the drawing. I think we responded in letter form last time, and we'll add it to the drawings. In terms of lighting, again, the idea was to replicate or upgrade the lighting in terms of lighting to match lighting color that currently exists in the parking lots, which is an LED box fixture. There are other light sources that could be provided, but this was just replacement of the existing wall pack units that were there to upgrade them to the same color rendition.
I think what Vidya is saying is since it's becoming residential now, that it should be brought more into keeping with the architectural scheme of the downtown area. And so we'd ask that you
Right, so this, I understand, I understand the comment. This is related to essentially the east and west parking lot areas. The, and the drive-out between the pharmacy and the east end of the building. Obviously, the west, the university drive has the street skate there with the lighting that is consistent with the rest of downtown. So what we're concerned about is the wall pack units, which are flanking the north wing on the east and the west essentially, if I understand correctly. And that's fine. We can propose an alternate fixture there, but that was the intent to replicate and replace with a better cutoff fixture with a right color rendition, but it doesn't have a kind of character that we would look for maybe for a period-type fixture, if that's what the thought is. We might have to change the concept in terms of using pole-mounted or something like that, because the efficacy of the fixture will be reduced if we're using something that's, you know, more of a period piece than a lighting unit.
Vidya, is that, is that your intent?
I would recommend that some options be presented since the, I can understand why wall packs were originally put in, because this is an office building, and after hours after 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM, it, the parking lot will be vacant once the offices are closed. But now it's going to go to residential, and we would require a better quality fixture for residential development anywhere else within the city, not just the downtown. So my suggestion is while it still meets the requirement, I'm sure there are other options available out there that are not quite so utilitarian.
Okay. With respect to the, again, the landscape, the intent is to maintain the existing landscaping or replace it as part of the program of renovating the facade of the building. Any deficiencies with respect to trees that may have died near the dumpster area, we will be replacing that with the, with a similar, with an appropriate selection there. I think the parking lot trees are maples and crab apples, I believe, at those islands, a significant caliber, I might add.
I think what we're looking for is for you to vision this as a new project, not an existing building. And, you know, it's becoming residential now from office, restaurant, and as any residential developer would do, we would like to see significant and beautiful landscaping to accompany the, the structure as we move forward.
Right, I mean, and the landscaping that's provided is, is quite nice, actually, and it is a concept that doesn't require irrigation, is, it's supposed to be hardy, it needs to be maintained, and there's, the owner has a program for maintenance that he's going to pursue as part of this process. Obviously, it's going to be, all these areas will be affected by the work that's proposed. In terms of signage, there's actually
One, one minute, one minute.
Yeah, I did. Robert, I have just a few questions and comments about the landscape. You know, and again, just, we just received this landscape plan with this packet. We did not see it in the earlier packet, so I did go out to see the landscape and review the condition of the existing features. And I have a couple of questions and perhaps maybe a few suggestions. I did notice that there is existing irrigation along the perimeter of the building. And so it looks like the existing U on the northwest side of the building is in, is in good shape. So it appears that that irrigation is working very well. You have a statement here, existing juniper and hosta to replace once the wells are installed. The hosta are eaten quite a bit by the, I mean, they're, they've been eaten by the critters, and that happens with hosta. So perhaps we could suggest a more tolerant, deer-tolerant plant instead of the hosta. And also, given that this is becoming a residential area, that, you know, junipers, and you also have bird's nest spruce and more commercial type and grade landscape, that perhaps it could be a little more residential feel. Because as you know, that the entry to the, to the building and landscape can, can enhance the appeal of that building and the quality of the building considerably, given that it's residential. Regarding the trees, so the existing maples, they, two of them on the, the east side appear to be thriving okay. You know, they're, they're not necessarily optimal as far as shade, because there is so much pavement that it, you know, in these hot summer months, it does create quite a heat island. And so it would be much more appealing if perhaps a larger species of the maple, or perhaps a different, more, you know, larger shade giving urban tolerant tree could perhaps be planted in those islands. And it states that's cotonyaster underneath the, the beds, and it's existing eonimus. I, I don't see where it adds any, I don't see where it adds any value. And perhaps considering something that was stated on the, the item eight, is maybe instead of the mulch, it could be maybe a small Michigan fieldstone mulch, given that there is no irrigation. And again, it would lend itself to be just a neater, cleaner look for the more residential feel of this building. As far as the existing crab apples, there is a line of crab apples along the north border that's delineating, or excuse me, the east border that's delineating the property from the 543 Main Street. And the row of crabs there is wonderful, and I think that that's a nice addition. However, the crabs on this site, they're not in great shape. And again, adding maybe larger, more shade-giving trees would, again, cool the area down. It wouldn't You know, it wouldn't feel so barren and crabs are kind of a, I mean, they're beautiful in the spring, but given that you have a beautiful spring grove of them just to the east that I don't think, I think maybe putting more appropriate plants in those islands clo, you know, closer to the building. Now, as we come down to the west side, you have existing burning bush and then you're proposing a new bush and I'm assuming that's another burning bush.
Yeah.
They, when you're in the, in a car, it's, it's impeding your vision as you're sitting in a car because those burning bush are at least five and a half, six feet tall. So I think it would be helpful if we remove those and put in a smaller shrub or another shade tree so that you would have visual reference as you're turning, because even though you're going to be turning left because that's one way, you know, the people walking or if they're skateboarding or whatever, it's going to be very difficult to see. And then I'm assuming that existing burning bush over by the dumpster, that's no longer there.
I believe it's there, but there's a tree that.
Yeah, it looked, it looked empty when I looked yesterday. Yeah, I mean, my overall comment is that, you know, the, the landscape would, it would really love what's going on with the building, love the use of the building and think it's just so appropriate, but again, given that this residential to soften up the, the area and create less of a commercial heat island for that back would, would, would really be appropriate. And then my last question is, are you planning on doing any improvements to the pavement?
In the parking lot?
Yeah.
Currently, no, just in the area of the entrances on the north where the stairs have to be essentially re on the north entrance rather than the main parking lot entrance. Yeah, there, there's the stairs and the cheek walls that are supporting the stairs need work in that location and then also the the curbs and the paving will be adjusted. All the, the entrances on the east and the west, the paving, especially on the west, there is actually brick pavers in there that have recited and they need to be, they need to be brought up to level within tolerance there, so there, there is some work that needs to be done in, in those especially unit paving areas.
Yeah. Yeah, because it, it just, there's just, and I don't know if, if this is because of construction, but the, the pavement is, is, is looks like it could use improvement and just given what the use is going to be in the parking lot. So now the other question I had, sorry, there was one more, I lied. But the, the irrigation along, do we know if that's working well on the east side of the building because it didn't appear that those plants were doing as well, excuse me, on the west side of the building?
I'm gonna let Dr. Atala respond to that, I believe it's not functioning, but I'll let him respond.
Could we finish first the other two elements and then I will take place and follow up on all that?
Okay, that's fine. Patty, are you? Are you complete?
My oration?
Oh, thank you very much, your specialty and we very much appreciate the, the depth of your discussion there. Commissioners, any of the other commissioners have comments for either Dr. Atala or Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions and comments. This is David, yes.
Thank you, David.
First, I really like the aesthetic improvements that are being proposed. I think it's going to add a nice character to the building and the use that it's being proposed to change to. I think recently I've been a real critic of apartments, not generically, but based on their location that we've seen them proposed recently. And primarily because of the impact they have on the neighborhood that they're being kind of nudged up against or in. This, however, I feel really strongly about as a good location for apartment use and good transition for this building. So I think that's a real good plus. The, the parking and a couple of comments regarding landscaping is Commissioner Martin just pointed out. I think I understood the parking from the planner correctly, 115 is required and in the report, it doesn't say residential, but in her verbal presentation she did, so I think that clarified it does include the requirement for office restaurant and residential that one. And we're provided 124. So there's a delta nine and I'm kind of looking at a couple of the the consequences of, you know, the way it is as compared to how it should be with the aisle width being a little small and I'm thinking if we could lose nine spots on the, we could improve greatly the accessibility of barrier free parking on the west lot where it looks like a den and improve the green and the feel of the, the building as a whole. And my concern there is that if you're parking in a barrier free and the way those are arranged right now, your access away from your parking to the building is going to be in the drive aisle, which is already now smaller than it should be in general. You're gonna have two ways of traffic backing into each other possibly and potential wheelchair or ambulatory challenged person. I, I would love to see some manipulation of those nine spots into adding green space and proper maneuvering for the barrier free there. If that couldn't be accomplished, I'd just take that same approach with nine extra spots and maybe the north entry, there's four spots to that flank each side of the entry. Turn that into a green space and really kind of dress up the front of that building and really not compromising total parking count, but really making an impact from a green standpoint. So those are my parking questions really relative.
Would you point out on, on the diagram exactly what David's talking about? The, the first nine spots proposed to lose.
I am trying to share the site plan, hopefully I'm.
The most west, the most west spots, you have to scroll up a little bit, right there.
Yeah, okay.
That low exit aisle, not there, building, you could do it either side.
Yeah, there.
Suggesting is not a design, I'm just suggesting a concept of somewhere in there, you can make it more green and you can make it a better driving situation and maneuvering situation for someone in a wheelchair. I don't know the answer, but I know that there's an opportunity there to improve it. And I, I really think we, this being such a, you know, a nice improvement as a general approach could stand to have a little more looking at that. And if that's not the solution, maybe it's the green space in front on the north elevation where those four parking spots are.
Right.
There's something there, I know there, there's a, you know, the team and owner can pull something together to improve. And again, it's, to me, it's the barrier free is the issue there, the compromised narrower aisle and the fact they have to the aisle is a big deal to me. One last question, the parking off to the east and north, there's four barrier free spots which all the way further to the left there from your cursor. I don't understand that. If that's meant to be barrier free to get to the building, I can't imagine a worse place to put it. But I'm not trying to be critical, I guess I'm just asking the question, why are they there? Not near the building, like maybe those four flanking the entryway. So that's my parking questions, accessibility is really my biggest question here. Vidya or planner mentioned that there's, it's barrier free to the apartment side and even that the north entry was, I don't see in that, that that is barrier free in any way.
It's not. It's not, the, the east and the west are, so north is to the left.
Okay, so this is a clarification, there is no barrier free access where my cursor is?
No.
Okay.
Well, when I look at the, the, the building as a whole and considering the change, we're, we're really trying to, I think, create something really special here, which I can applaud, but the west off of university into the building with no barrier free feels like we're missing a great opportunity to improve this building, even if it's just for the restaurants and the offices. More importantly, I think if we're putting lifting units down here in downtown, we're wanting them to go out of their front door and explore downtown to Main Street. And that main entry, in my opinion, should, we should jump through some hurdles and make that a barrier free access point. And it's doable, it's just, maybe it hasn't been a priority in the design so far, but I'd love to see that happen. Then looking at the two that are called barrier free, technically they're not based on the information I see in the plan. One to the east, the door at the edge of the landing isn't sufficient and you can't tell in the site plan, but when you look in the floor plan, the door swing is too close to the edge where the ramp starts before you enter that stairway. So I'm really seeing the primary accessible entrance to the west where the parking is, which makes sense.
Right.
That is a single slope ramp that exceeds the length of a ramp for barrier test on the other side, that side. And there's no landing at the door indicated on the plan, it doesn't mean there isn't one, but there isn't enough information planned for me to say it's barrier free. So I, that would need clarification in, in my mind. And then really to kind of conclude my thoughts on the accessibility. If, if the two ways into the site by vehicles is inbound to the east and exiting to the west, it's, it's kind of a question, it's obvious on the east, it's in, is it in and out on the west or is it just out?
Just out.
So if that's just the out entry, it's better than two way in my opinion, but if you're a wheelchair person, you're coming up a drive aisle because there's no sidewalk and you're going all the way to the back parking lot to turn through the aisle that I described as being too narrow to go all the way back to get into, and I'm sorry, right where your cursor is now. If you face back towards the west entry, turn down, down and then out to university, that would be the reversed path a person in a wheelchair would have to take to get into the building. It could be made better by if you go down that drive again and stop right at the first barrier free spot. If you do a curb cut there and aisle access into the entry, that could make your, your passage into the building a little better. But nonetheless, it's, it's kind of out of the way and that ramp, as I described, isn't barrier free, so I think there's enough reworking of the barrier free access that if we take these other thoughts into consideration, we can probably improve this greatly for a small amount of population, but nonetheless, those that need the help could probably be served better if you looked at it a little differently. Those are my general, general comments to the overall plan, but I'll just back up and say really love the idea, the special exception of going to residential and really like aesthetically how they're treating the building, just need to see a little bit more green, a lot more accessibility and maybe some consideration of maneuvering in the parking area with homing of cars and wheelchairs.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? This matter is scheduled this evening for a public hearing.
Is it?
I'm gonna open the.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute, Doctor.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open the public hearing at 7:44 and I'm gonna ask Sienna if, if you've received any communications either verbally or electronically relative to this project as it's been posted for a public hearing tonight.
We have not and there is not anyone on the call either.
Okay, thank you very much. So the public hearing is open, just for the record, if anyone is on the, the meeting, the virtual meeting tonight and wishes to speak up, this is the opportunity to do it, this is anyone from the general public other than the commission members and the petitioner and staff that are here tonight. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, consider it held at 7:45. And we're back to our discussion again. Dr. Atala, I cut you off there, we had to get that formality out of the way, but please go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I have quite a bit to add in here and the, please bear with me. I want to address the issue of the lighting, then the landscaping, then the parking. The rest, I think Robert has handled that. As far as the lighting, we still have commercial people there in the building, the main floor, we gotta remember is full of commercial institutions. And the chief of the fire department and the police asked us to keep these big lights so they can monitor what's going on at night, especially in light of the vandalism that never stops. Now, of course, we're gonna have a lot of surveillance, a lot of particular TV circuitry there to monitor the situation, but we are vandalized approximately once or twice a week in our building. A recent one was only three weeks ago where people went down and destroyed the water fountains and we had a major flood. So having lights in that area at the east and west is very important. I understand, we would like to have residential looks, but we also have commercial people there. And the parking lot itself has at least six 25 foot high poles all equipped with three or four lights that are powerful lights, they're all LEDs. That parking lot is very lit and we need effectiveness to prevent the vandalism that we're encountering in downtown Rochester. If you go to the police department, you see that we file approximately one report a week with vandalism and we get police reports and of course, they can't find who did what. So safety here, as far as I am concerned, and I hope that you would appreciate that, is safety and not just beauty. Landscaping. Well, when I started building my buildings downtown Rochester, I was blamed for using grass on Main Street and putting a lot of green on Main Street. I think what you're seeing right now is we are already in the phase of construction, we did demolition. It caused a lot of damage. We are gonna put beautiful maples and we have tons of them there and we're gonna put one next to the dumpster on the northwest corner as Vidya suggested. And there we can go as a beautiful autumn blaze maple, a sugar maple that'll be gorgeous like the others. In the other area, we can't go tall. And the reason is, we are on the east side of the property carrying major lines of electricity going from the substation to Lake Orion. If we put big trees or tall trees there, they're gonna come and cut them, which they do routinely because we have problems with the traffic of electricity and if you look at that area when you visit, you will see how much electric wires are between 543 Main and 134 Building. So putting big trees is not the answer. I intend, once we are done construction, to add cherry trees that don't grow big, Japanese maples at the entrances and only a tall, like I said, sugar maple autumn blaze next to the dumpster because there's no lines there, no electrical lines. So and then we are gonna obviously, we're killing, if you went recently there, you would see the wood chips is free from. from any weed because we're killing the weed actively. And then we're gonna put a new coat of, uh, wood chips there that will be the natural, uh, wood chip, which is the prime. As far as the asphalt thing, we're gonna seal and close the cracks. We cannot at this time redo the asphalt because for those of you that don't know, I'd like to announce to you that as soon as we're done with this project, we're gonna have the addition of a new building that's a T building of thirty-four thousand square feet on five four three main. And we're gonna have trucks coming and going to build that building.
Doctor, you cut out for me anyway. Would you repeat, repeat that, please?
We are designing, Yamasaaki is designing and pretty to finish the plans for an addition to five four three main, which will be residential and retail. If there is appeal for that, or it'll be all residential. Essentially, it's gonna be a T building that's within the V. That is what five four three main is. In addition, we have been approached by, uh, an IT company to do a building right on the creek, which will be right across from five three zero main. And that's gonna require a lot of space. And we might have to do and dig way under the hall one thirty-four to do underground parking to satisfy the parking requirements. I discussed that with the city administration. We're not ready for that to come to you about it, but that's on the horizon. So to do right now, that parking lot and re-ashvolded would be a waste of money and time because that might all be in the next couple of years, uh, addressed in that manner.
But your intent with this project tonight is to seal the parking lot and re-stripe it?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm hearing, uh, and there's a chance for the others to speak up here. What I'm hearing is great excitement about the project here, conversion of the building, gonna become a very sophisticated building. I think we want to see pop, so to speak, uh, of the appearance for the outside. And, you know, there's a lot of brick and asphalt here, so there are not a lot of options for doing that. You're, you're really upgrading the appearance of the building, but we'd love to see it in the landscaping outside as, as best and as practical as you can to make it an exciting, essentially new address to live at, not just a conversion.
I agree, uh, Mr. Chairman, and believe me, all my properties, as you look at five four three main right now, we've had many of the city, the beautiful awards because we maintain our landscaping. Rochester Property Management maintains, we got five people that are working daily on the landscaping. Right now, like I said, we are in the stage of demolition. We got big dumpsters there. This is not the time to do fine landscaping, but when the project is done, we certainly will.
We appreciate your commitment to that.
Thank you.
Would you then be, uh, because would you then be resubmitting then a land, a new landscape plan, a revised landscape plan?
I, I don't think so. I think you will see it and you will see the beauty of what we do. Look at five four three, look even at it right now, we got perennials that are doing great, our lilies, our, uh, uh, salvia's, our roses. I mean, there's a lot of great landscape there. And we're gonna keep that and keep it look residential and keep it look good. We believe in landscape as a major thing in any building. And you have my commitment that we will do that.
Vidya, regarding the, uh, the light fixtures, uh, you're asking that any new ones put in be something more classier, a little more residential based instead of just commercial?
And the applicant is proposing to replace existing fixtures with new fixtures. Our recommendation is just you're already replacing the fixtures. Just go with something more decorative. I know Doc mentioned that the parking lot has got twenty-five foot high light poles and powerful lights. And I, I don't think the vandalism that we're unfortunately encountering is really tied to the, the wall pack like fixtures. That is a valid parking lot because every meeting I come to Rochester, I ride in at dark and I drive off at dawn. I've seen it's a very valid parking lot. We are not recommending any changes to the light poles. We are fine as they are, but with regard to the building, if you're going to put in new fixtures, why not put in something that is slightly more decorative and not as industrial is what our recommendation is. And I don't think this is a cost prohibitive or an unnecessarily sort of burdensome or challenging requirement. It, it is reasonable considering what we have required of all other buildings in town.
But Doctor, we're asking you to just task your folks with a, a little more investigation. See if they can come, come up with something just as functional, but, uh, a little more befitting a residential property.
Well, we can, we can add, and I asked actually Robert to do that and we'll put it on the plans, to put at the entrance on university and at the entrance from the parking lot, some residential fixtures on the porches. So people can see that this is a residential matter. I am very concerned, Mr. Chairman, about vandalism. And I want bright light that the police can see people. It's not just about beauty, it's about saving my property. And if you allow me to continue, please, I would like to talk about the parking and-
Let me, uh, let me finish with Vidya here. Um, I'm concerned about the, the landscape and were this to be approved, what would we do? Ask the administration to make sure that it's done according to the approval?
This is a special exception for upper story apartments. My recommendation is to avoid any confusion at a later date. Uh, when you're making a recommendation for approval of the plan, clearly list what the conditions and changes you're requiring on the landscape plan are. I don't want it left open to interpretation because that can become a problem down the line. So if the planning commission, I, I see doctors, uh, Atala's point that, you know, if there are power lines, you really don't want taller trees going there because they will cut it down. But I also think asking for a nice shade tree in the landscape island next to the dumpster, changing all the ground cover to something that is more hardscape so weeds are not growing, trimming the bushes and maybe swapping out a couple of burning bushes where line of sight is obstructed around the turn are all reasonable requirements. Um, you know, swapping out existing trees that are on the northeast side of the parking lot is not recommended if there are overhead power lines. We don't want to get into, uh, interfering with those. But these minor tweaks and changes can definitely enhance the building. So, uh, if you would, when you make a motion, when the planning commission does, I would like some clear clarification of exactly what you're requiring so that there is no difference of opinion later in what was said and what was understood.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Vidya on that particular subject, the landscaping? Okay, Doctor, proceed.
So I, uh, Vidya, uh, I have no problem, uh, following your suggestions, none at all. We can trim those bushes, the burning bushes, so we can better visibility. And we can address the, uh, mulch and we can address the trees. I don't have any issue with that.
Thank you.
And, uh, as far as the barrier free, uh, for Mr. Gassen, Mr. Gassen, we have two barrier free areas, one of the east, and that's where most of the people coming to the restaurant here uh, use these. And we have one on the west. So we have two barrier frees, uh, access, and we have also automatic door openers there. Uh, that was asked by Mr. McClure and, uh, the building department. And we're gonna do this. So the east and west are two entrances that are for the handicap. And as far as the four that you mentioned that are right there, these are for the medical center. And they're part of five four three main, not part of one thirty-four. So these are not used for people to come to this building. The five that are on the west side are the ones where people used to come in all for many years and visit all the doctors in this building that used to be for many, many years, the doctor's building. So there is a pattern here that everybody has adjusted to, and that's very convenient. And I think that is the ideal condition for the building. And I really honestly don't intend to change it.
Vidya, how many are required for this building on its own?
One hundred and fifteen.
How many, how many, uh, handicaps, excuse me?
Uh, for hundred and fifteen, you would, um, twenty-five one. I believe it's five or six spaces. My only question to Doc would be if hundred and fifteen is required for the building and one hundred and twenty-four are shown to service this building and if these spaces are actually intended for five four three, is there a shared parking agreement that ties all of this together?
Uh, Vidya, to answer your questions, these are used for people to enter five four three, but five four three has its own handicap parking right across from Keller Williams building. So we have four more in there that have been approved. So these can be used and are honestly being used for people to park in here and go to the medical center. Those that come in to one thirty-four, they have five of them right here. And this has been approved for years.
Vidya, I'm worried about the count. I mean, those are counting for another property.
I, I believe what Doc is saying is they're actually counted with this property, but used by five four three Main Street. Like Mr. Gassen said, the odds of somebody who's in a wheelchair parking here and trying to get this building are slim to none. I mean, it's plus this is not barrier free accessible. So you would say somebody has to park here and come all this way crossing this main drive aisle and try to get in here. I don't, I don't think that is feasible. So although it is being counted towards the parking for one thirty-four, for all means and purposes, those four spaces are tied to this building.
Your, your memo notes that the plan includes a total of a hundred and twenty-four spaces and that one hundred and fifteen are required.
Correct.
But if those four do not count for this building, it's really the plan includes a total of a hundred and twenty spaces.
Yeah. Yeah.
Isn't that correct?
Yes. So they'll have only five surplus and what Mr. Gassen was concerned about was if this area is not barrier free accessible, this area is not barrier free accessible, somebody who is not visiting the building in a vehicle technically have to come in a wheelchair down the sidewalk. They'll have to come all the way here. They'll have to come this way and then try to run down.
And all that through a driveway.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, please, I couldn't hear.
All of that is through a driveway.
Yes, exactly. They'll have to come through an oncoming traffic driveway all this way. I think Mr. Gassen's suggestion was if you don't count those top four handicap spaces and we have a surplus of another five, if we could create an access so somebody who's in a wheelchair can come, even though this is also on a driveway, it'd be a shorter route to get into the building barrier free access wise. I believe that was one of the suggestion and that is definitely something I would need the planning commission's feedback on.
Vidya, uh, this is university, this is University Drive.
Correct.
Nobody is gonna drop a handicap person on a wheelchair here to make him come in here or walk all the way. People are gonna come from here. They can go for the handicap here, or they can make the turn and come to the handicap here. The cars are not gonna stop here on University Drive. Especially this is, they're going this way. And where are they gonna stop to drop that person with a handicap chair in here? Never happened. And incidentally, we have five in here and four in here. And barely one or two are used on either side. And I have been owning this building for thirty-five years and I have never seen these places before. Never.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just a quick question I have then. Um, if there are any person that is living in the building, they traverse downtown and then get back in building and are on university, what do they do?
You are breaking up real badly. You, you have to repeat that.
I said, if, if someone's living in the building as a resident and they're handicapped and they're, um, traversing downtown without a car and they're on university and they want to get back into their building, how do they do it?
They have to go all the way around to the rear, it's, it looks like.
And, and that ramp is, is, is it forty feet? Do I have that correct? That ramp is forty feet long?
It's undimensioned and unclear, but I think you're really-
It's tw- it's one inch equals twenty, so.
You're pretty close there, Commissioner Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this is, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Christian.
Yes, that was my comment as well, that Commissioner Bavacqua had mentioned is that the doctors hypothetical presumes that the person or the visitor in the handicap in the wheelchair is gonna be dropped off, but if they're local, if they live local, they live a couple of blocks away and they want to come visit someone there or go to, uh, one of the stops, how are they going to get there? And that was the concern that I think Commissioner Bavacqua had that I shared as well.
Where, where are we leading, gentlemen? I mean, for a barrier free on University Drive at that entrance?
I think, this is me, I would, I like the idea of that Commissioner Gassen had mentioned about a cutout where, yeah, right around there somewhere to, you know, at least eliminate the, the distance that a wheelchair user would have to make driving or, you know, riding up that alley exactly and being able to cut in, you're going-
So we can see that?
Yeah, you're going all the way down that alley.
Move it up, your video.
Oh. This-
There we go, there we go.
Perfect. To see if there's some opportunity to have a cutout there. You know, the curb cutout, so you could navigate that with a little more efficiency instead of having to go all the way around that, that corner there. And then come all the way back through the parking lot, which is already tight in order to access the building.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add into the conversation here, this is Commissioner Gassen.
Please do.
I'm liking that we're talking about it, but back to the, uh, the university entry, and I think it, Commissioner Bavacqua's comments about, you know, someone coming from Main Street down to university. And I'm thinking of it as this is an attractive building, incredibly attractive building that someone that wants to live and thrive in downtown that's handicapped, they would want to live here. So their main in and out isn't being dropped off, it's their day to keep coming and going. So that main entry, not only for the residents, but for the users of the commercial aspects of the building, should have a accessible entry. I'll go a step further. If we're considering a use change for two thirds of the building, basically by code, you're required to make the whole building accessible. I think we shouldn't be anything short of having a university, um, access that is barrier free. And I know that we can do it. I, I'm sure that uh, you could come up with several variations of how it could work, especially with all the work that's being done there with the wells and the bridges and so forth. An accessible entry is not a challenge. I mean, I will figure it out, um, pretty easily. And, um, I think this, the building that they're attempting to do deserves that sort of treatment on university. I don't think it should be a sneak in the back way if you're in a wheelchair. Especially, I don't think it's acceptable to go down the drive at all. I think there need to be a pedestrian walkway in the west or the east to get to one of those entries that are called barrier free now.
Mr. Lord, Mr. Stone, you two build a lot of stuff. What do you think here?
I'll let Mr. Stone go first.
Sorry.
Sorry, I have to find the unmute button. Uh, I would agree with Mr. Gasson that we could find barrier-free access to the building would be great. Um, I, I used to harp on landscape quite a bit. Uh, I thought we beat that up last time pretty good, uh, whenever the last meeting was. Um, I don't have issue with the front of the building or the side of the building with the new windows. I think it's a nice improvement to downtown. Uh, though I do question the parking adjacent to the other building next to the, uh, parking deck or garage for the other structure adjacent to this property. Why is it on the drawing if it's not needed?
What about the handicapped at, uh, University Drive entrance?
Uh, again, I thought we addressed this or talked a bit about it last time. Uh, I'd love to see it improved. I do believe the applicant said that, uh, that wasn't part of the program, uh, full-scale uh, changes to it, but if they're willing to make building improvements, make it more accessible and, and welcoming to the neighborhood, great.
Eric.
I think, um, for me, what I get, what I heard was that based on the change in use uh, of the building that there, if I heard it right, it sounded like there was a code requirement to make this building accessible. And if that's the case, like, that goes beyond this, this commission. So I think that needs to be understood. Um, and, but aside from that, if that's not the case, then I would agree that if there's opportunities to improve the situation, particularly given that we're changing to residential here, um, if there's opportunities to make that accessibility occur off University, we should give the petitioner the opportunity to look at that and make that change. Um, we've talked about a number of things here and, and I, I, I would like to hear from them on their ability to go back and, and make that happen. And secondly, for me, the, the landscaping, I, i- is, is kind of a big deal because I do think that that does make, uh, really enhance the, the appearance of this whole property. And if we're, if we're making it residential, I'd get, it just becomes that much more paramount if that happens. And if there are excess parking stalls here, I think it does create a nice opportunity to, to do something a little more meaningful here, and, and it's really not at a tremendous expense. Uh, it looks to me like the, the overhead power lines that, that run through the site are over on the, the east side. So I do, do see that those easterly islands are, are impacted by the power lines, I can understand that. Um, but the rest of the property, I don't think is really encumbered by, by that, and, and there's opportunities to, to improve there, so. Um, and then we talked a bit about the lighting, but, uh, you know, if we can have a, a more ornate or a better lighting, um, uh, proposed here that still provides the, you know, the photometrics that you need for, for security, then that, that seems like a no-brainer that we ought to be able to accomplish that too. So I look forward to hearing the, from the petitioner on what they can do to address
Are there commissioners?
On that last, on that last item, uh, oh. Yeah, this is Robert. On that last item regarding the lighting, um, as Dr. Atallah had mentioned, we do have scotch period-type fixtures on the building currently that are, we are in the process of trying to find an appropriate, um, substitute for, and that would take those positions, especially in the east and west entrances, and that we were going to add a similar type fixture to, um, north entrance as well, even though they have a, a different fixture location. So we'll respond back with a, an appropriate fixture selection for those entrances. The other, we'll see what we can find there. We'll make the effort to look at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I really think that the, uh, making a handicap entrance from the front will ruin the whole aesthetic we're trying to do in the front. I think though that the option to open up the west side and make another entrance, as Mr. Gasson suggested, I think that's definitely doable. So we can have an entrance there for the handicap from the east as well as the west. Although, one has to keep in mind that the west entrance is really an exit, not an entrance. So if they're coming in with a wheelchair, that's gonna handicap them. But if that's what you would like to suggest, we can be, certainly, it's very easy to accommodate
Vidya, do you have the, uh, plan up?
Yes.
Let's see.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
There you go, yes, Vidya.
If, uh, Robert could kindly address the minimum square footage of the unit size, just so, because that's an ordinance requirement, I want to make sure that compliance is possible.
The last, um, on that upper level, there's only one unit that falls, that is a studio unit. It's about one hundred and fifty square feet. We already looked at it and reworked it to accomplish, uh, more than the five hundred square foot minimum, so that's not an issue for us, and we can resubmit that to show how that works.
Perfect, thank you.
So we solved that one.
I'm, uh, I think I'm satisfied that we have a commitment on, uh, the appropriate landscaping, and we'll ask whoever makes the motion to put Vidya's list in. I'm, I'm, uh, thinking about Mr. Gasson's concern here again. I'm looking at, uh, that west side parking unit. Um, if the furthest west strip from New Bush over was eliminated, uh, you could actually create a walkway from the rear parking lot in front of those spaces on, uh, on the east side of that section. So it would start kinda where it says New Crab Apple Tree. It would run along the front of the cars up to that ramp, and then the spaces could be, um, pushed back. The spaces could be lengthened and put in there. I'm, I'm thinking on the other side, you could probably put in, I don't know, three or four parallel parking spaces, so you wouldn't completely lose the count. This would be on the, on the west side of that unit. This, just some ideas, but it is, uh, is a key assistant commission relative to identifying the concerns of handicapped people. And, uh, as you know, he's lived with it his whole life, and I, I put a lot of faith and weight in what he says. And so when I see, in this case, the opportunity to put a sidewalk in from the rear, um, from the rear parking area along the building up to the ramp, that intrigues me. And I know that, uh, go ahead, Vidya.
I want to summarize exactly what the options are with regard to barrier-free access, Mr. Chairman, so the planning commission can decide how you would like to direct the applicant. The first one is to make the, you know, entrance of West University Drive barrier-free accessible. It is possible from a building code standpoint, although it might affect the building aesthetics per doctor. So, but that is an option to keep open. The second option would be is to provide a cut over here so that you have access to the building, uh, but like the Doc once again pointed out, this is an exit, so anybody who's in a wheelchair is coming into oncoming traffic to get over here, which worries me a little bit. So the third suggestion you had offered is elimination, since this is only twenty feet wide, eliminate these spaces or keep these spaces and convert these to parallel parking spaces. You should be able to squeeze in four, which will allow for more than enough aisle with make the turn movements. That won't solve your barrier-free access issue though, for somebody who's in a wheelchair from the neighborhood like Commissioner, uh, Bavacqua and Hozar stated. If they live in the neighborhood or they live in the building and just want to go out for dinner down the street and come back, it still doesn't answer their problem by figuring this. So I would say the two options before you for suggestion are convert this to barrier-free accessible or provide a cut over here to make this more barrier-free accessible. It'll still require some amount of traversing through this, but maybe signage could be put up over here saying, watch out for wheelchair traffic or something like that. So I just wanted to summarize what you had discussed, so the options that you.
Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman and, and Vidya, this is Commissioner K. Um, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made today. I think if we're, um, providing a special exception usage for the, for the building, that it really does need to be wheelchair accessible. And I personally, I don't view, um, a handicap person nor any pedestrian, you know, walking down the driveway as being a proper entrance. So I really think that the front needs to find a way to be reworked.
Okay.
I would agree with that. And then I just had one quick question. Um, so there's no, it sounds like there's no ordinance governing the lower level apartments, um, and I wanted to see if Robert could clarify on the size, um, on the sizes there of how, how large those units are.
Are those units?
In regards to the studio.
Uh, the studio units are approximately four hundred square feet to six hundred square feet. Um, they're actually larger in, some of them are larger in the lower areas because of some of the existing plant rooms and geometries of structure and so on. Um, I, I don't recall which ones at four hundred or four fifty, but actually there are whole developments that are built now with four hundred and fifty square foot apartments, and they are meant, you know, for people that turn them over frequently as temporary residences and so on. So it's not an unusual thing, but, uh, it's just, that's something that's addressed in the ordinance currently. Um, so I, I believe the proportion is one or two that are in the four hundred and fifty to five hundred square foot range. The other four, three or four, about six hundred square feet, five hundred and six hundred square feet, and the one on the upper level is, is five hundred square feet.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Yes, Dr. Go ahead.
Well, on the west side here, we can't eliminate parking spaces. We have a major company here called Ascension Capital. These are a major company. They are on the, uh, uh, NICE, and they have quite a bit of employees, and that's exactly where they park. To eliminate this parking, that tenant will run away. It's not something good for us or for the city of Rochester.
That makes sense. I thank you for pointing that out. They are in the west end of the building, aren't they?
Correct.
Anyone else? Who have I missed? Who have I not picked on?
I have a follow-up if I, if I could, unless somebody else. Well, I guess I haven't heard the answer yet on whether or not there's a code requirement here to bring these, this building up to conformance for barrier-free. And then secondly, what, what about the, the entrance, uh, on the east side of the building there? I, I've heard that there's ramps there, and I thought I heard that those ramps are not, not currently complying, but could they be brought to, into compliance? Is that, is that an option? That may be a better way to get access off University Drive, if that's, if that's an
They can be run into compliance, yes. We are taking a significant chunk of that sidewalk out currently to, um, for the purposes of the units below, and so that sidewalk would, would be, could be reworked, and the entrance itself is already part of the reconstruction there to put a non-motor door opener and, and make sure we have proper latch side distances and so on. So yes, we could do that.
So is that, is that a better option to look at that entrance and coming in off University on the east side than coming in on the west side?
Um, I think, I think it can be done, looked at, it's probably about the same amount of work, because there's work that has to be done on the west as well to, to reinstate the pavement to the proper slopes because it subsided. And so, um, it's a bottle wash either way, in my opinion.
Robert, what about the code requirement? Do you know that answer?
The, the code is, um, I guess it's an interpretation. This, if that, and either of these entrances are considered main building entrances. The one in the front is obviously the ceremonial entrance to the building. Whether it's the main entrance, it depends on how you define main, whether it's the majority of people that are parking and living in the building, or is it from a pedestrian point of view, will the University Drive be the main entrance? I guess it, um, you could make arguments either way. From a pedestrian point of view, definitely, um, you could handle either one of the, the one on University or the east and west without, um, too much difference in walk distance. But, I mean, the ceremonial entrance appears to be the main entrance to the building, and so I think it would ultimately be interpreted that way if it was a new building construction.
So the east entrance could be brought up to?
Yeah.
Code. Is that? On the east side of the building, wide enough that you could put a sidewalk along the east wall of the building, leading to the public sidewalk? Yes.
On the west side, you could as well. Um, because that's thirty feet between the buildings, between the one thirty-four and the, the other building, and, and we require, uh, access for fire trucks and vehicles out that way, and we're already providing a landscape area there to allow for the window well units in there. We could provide a paved surface as a sidewalk there to separate the drive-out from any kind of pedestrian access.
Well, it does eliminate pedestrians walking in the, in the driveway. You could do that on, on both east and west sides?
I, I know on the west side you can do it. It looks like the east side is pretty close, but I'd have to, I'm not sure of the dimension there, to be honest with you.
David, does that help any, uh, if that east entrance is improved to handicapped and there's a sidewalk on each side?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great idea as a solution to safely getting someone to the east or west entrance, uh, to have a dedicated pedestrian walkway, and I'll just support that with the question to all of us, is it ever safe to send someone in a wheelchair down a vehicle drive, ever? Would we ever suggest doing that? And my question, my answer is no, but that sidewalk, either way, what, east or west would solve that, but I would, I would stress the importance of making the main entry off of University accessible as well, because I think it's very achievable. But the sidewalks on either way, uh, as a dedicated pedestrian walkway would be a great
Chairman, the required width for one-way circulation is fifteen feet. A minimum required width for a public sidewalk would be five feet, so that, that is twenty feet. This is definitely more than twenty feet. Um, my only concern would be, I don't know if this is the main route by which fire trucks come into the building, and fire trucks do require, uh, minimum twenty feet? I'm, I'm not sure. Nick might have to correct me on that. I don't know if they require a minimum twenty feet pavement, but in which case, with the pavement and the sidewalk, we'll need about twenty-five feet here. There is no diameter, so I can grab a scale and check.
Team like those would be, uh, excellent solutions to part of the problem here. Anyone else have, uh, any more input? Any of the commissioners?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. So this maybe is a comment a little bit more for administration and, uh, maybe for the mayor to, to, to listen in on. Um, and it's, it's kind, it's a thought that's come up based on the fact that we're seeing more and more, um, uh, properties shifting to residential in the downtown area, and, uh, Dr. Atallah is considering, um, uh, you know, doing it on another property as well. So I think there's a bit of an unintended consequence here, uh, in regards to, uh, uh, the, the tax revenue and the fact that, uh, we're slowly increasing the percentage of the, of the, the DDA revenue that comes from residential. And from my perspective, that, uh, doesn't really fall in line with the intent and the spirit of the, uh, of the TIF, TIF program. You, you got tax revenue that, um, should be serving residential needs, and it's being captured by the DDA. And for example, uh, the, the incremental tax revenue that goes toward the DDA does not fund police whatsoever. So the concept of bringing more and more residents into the DDA area and any revenue generated by that growth, um, not funding police whatsoever, considering, um, the, the needs that, uh, Dr. Atallah mentioned for. Dr. Atala mentioned for police surveillance. Um, it it concerns me and I I think I did like a little bit of a back of a napkin calculation at one point last year. Um, don't quote me on it, but it looked to me like sixteen percent of the DDA revenue comes from uh residential res- residential properties where the whether it be Great Oaks or uh Sunrise or uh houses that are in the area. So um, I just would like administration to keep that in mind and that at some point we may have to a- address uh, the impact of this shift on um, revenue to the DDA. And maybe, you know, make some sort of geographic adjustment to the DDA area. So I know, I know it's not necessarily a specific issue to this project or to the planning commission, but it is the sort of thing that when we make these decisions to approve projects like this, they impact other areas.
Hopefully, the uh, the commercial growth of the DDA area continues as well and would tend to offset that, but that will be a great calculation that the administration has to do.
Thank you. And and one other thing is, is um, I guess in voting on this, I I'm I'm concerned with there, there's one of these ones that further we get into it, the more kind of unknowns or that we we're building a larger and larger list of the things that will need to be done post approval and that always makes me nervous. Um, not really knowing um, what the requirements are for handicap. Um, you know, the the overall requirements for it and whether the it's mandated that that certain entrances need to be accessible or not. Not really knowing exactly what's going to happen with a landscape uh, plan that that is not on paper. Um, I have concerns with all those things, so.
Uh, just a question for the architects and builders. What do you do to find the answer? Do you have to ask the state of Michigan? Is that the authority on uh, handicap accessibility for buildings? You know, what is simply required?
Well, within the design team, they have that knowledge and expertise to answer the questions and come up with options to solve the issue. And if they need to, the state's a resource or the city building department.
Randy.
Randy are building a system.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, Randy, our building official walk into it tomorrow.
Okay, good. But we could make these, Dean, I understand your point. We're uh, putting it on the administration again to sweep up for us and uh uh, so we'll have to consider all those things and try to, if there's a motion made here, make sure it's as tight as possible. Is there any consideration of a motion?
Mister Chairman? I'm not making a motion, but I would suggest that uh, the information we've had tonight and discussion uh, would merit uh, sending this back to the applicant to bring back to us the solutions that we've been talking about or bring back solutions to the issues we've been talking about instead of trying to condition a motion that addresses solutions for them. I think that would be a troublesome thing to do.
I support that non-motion.
What was that?
I support that non-motion.
When is the next, uh, when is the next planning commission meeting?
August sixth.
August sixth.
Mister Chairman, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr.
Mister Gasson should uh not make any opinions on this. He should excuse himself. I'm sorry to say that, but I need to share with you some significant concern about police comments. Mister uh, Gasson wanted to propose me to and try to do plans for me and to help getting things through the city. And this never materialized. And he did never showed up really to manifest anything. And he has biased against my projects. And he expressed that at every one of your meetings. I think he's got to be, it's very unethical what he's doing. And even when I presented the concept in October first, twenty eighteen, it was totally in this approval of the whole project and what.
Dr., I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off at this point. And I appreciate you speaking up, but uh, we're not going to talk about that any further tonight. I will speak for the commission and say that Mister Gasson has been above board in the three or four years I worked with him here. And uh, I I uh, have no doubt in my mind that he is doing this absolutely within the ethics of being a planning commissioner and a licensed architect. So I appreciate your opinion, but uh, this continue, this will continue with the commissioners only. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor.
I mean, if 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 there is, is it, is it? If the if the will of the commission to postpone this, is it possible to have a another meeting this month? Because I know we've been, we've been kicking this one around for a while. Is that?
That is actually feasible. That's up to you guys. If you would like to schedule it, um, if that's the case, um.
When would that be?
That meeting would take place approximately two weeks from now, I would say, on the twenty-third of July.
So if someone would like to make a motion that we hold a second meeting in July and at the same time, um I guess we would move to um, ask the petitioner to bring a revised plan back to us at that time.
I'm moved.
I guess my concern would be the the ability for the petitioner to produce a revised set of plans that Vidya has time to look at in advance of the meeting. It
Robert, can you make that meeting? Can you?
We would.
Yeah, I mean, I can, go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, I would actually request that you give it to me by Friday, the tenth, if that is
of this week.
Of this week.
The building entrance study can be done by then. I'm not sure about the landscape response. I'll be honest with you.
Um, okay, so basically, if you cannot get that to me, then we'll have no choice but to go to the sixth. I'm like.
Well, let me, um, I have to make, no, I will assume that I can't make it, but I have to get my landscape architect on it immediately. I have to call them.
Okay. Really?
There are a motion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Did someone make?
I guess I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to table this item to the next available planning commission meeting.
Support.
So it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Yes. So uh, no discussion, Mayor?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, did did Commissioner Hauser have a?
You're on mute, Christian.
You're just seconding?
Sorry, yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're gonna, we're gonna call the roll. Please call.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I just make a quick comment. Um you know, as as Mister Gasson has said earlier, I I I think this is a good project. Um, I I think it's a good thing to have some of this um apartments where where it is. Uh, I'll have to admit at at my advanced age, I'm I'm not really interested moving into a four hundred and fifty square foot apartment right now, but uh, I'm sure some some, some, somebody else will. Um you know, I think some plan for the handicap is good. Um, you know, wh- whatever, whatever gets worked out, I'm good with, but I think, you know, we 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 should have that and I think that's good. Um, I I think we're on the right track for um the landscaping. I mean, it's kind of making progress. So to to me, if you know, we kind of get this, these couple of things wrapped up. Um, you know, I'm I'm confident that this, you know, this will 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 probably move forward. So I mean, I think it's a good project. Again, all the all the questions ha- have been good. Uh, I do agree with uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bivaku that I would like to have as much of this stuff, you know, wrapped up as possible when we vote on it. So we're not asking the city administration to have to follow up on all kinds of different things. So I I I know we I I know the doctor wants to get moving on this and I I understand it. And that's why I brought up to have this thing in two weeks. So hopefully uh hopefully we can see see the stuff and uh, have a vote on it then. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So there's a motion and it's uh, been uh, seconded to have the second meeting. And what's the date, Siana?
If we will have the second meeting, it'll be July twenty-third. If he did not, he is not able to get the information, it will be August sixth.
So the motion is for July twenty-third, so we can have the roll call, please.
Lord?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Vixen?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bivaku?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good.
Mister Chairman, can I make a one more comment? Just real quick. So thank, just just also on that comment council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bivaku made on on the DDA and and you know, where the money goes. I mean, I I think that is not really for the planning commission necessarily, but
No, it is not.
But but that is a, that is a issue um, that is out there. So um, you know, that's something that all of us involved in administration and the government need to keep that in mind, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I also make him a a comment, please?
Please do.
I I would like to thank the doctor for all that you are doing for the city of Rochester and it's very, very much appreciated.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you. I am though very disappointed. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is number seven, public hearing for the consideration of a site plan for a facade renovation to be located at one-one-one-seven Wilcox. Adam Planner.
I apologize, I was unmute. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Park Motors to make facade renovations to an existing industrial building. The site is on the west side of Wilcox Street, north of Woodburn and is owned I one, which is industrial one district. I will share the site plan on my screen now. I hope everybody can see it. Um, let me try a little smaller so. Uh, the applicant appeared before you at your meeting on June the eighteenth and received feedback on the proposed plan. The applicant was directed to revise and address these questions and concerns and what was in our review letter dated June the eleventh. With regard to use, the site is occupied by an existing single-story three thousand one hundred and seventy square foot building that is being used as an indoor auto sales and storage business. The site was previously occupied by a transmission shop. The building is proposed to be used as a storage warehouse for a car collection owned by the applicant. Cars would generally be sold only online with an occasional sale from the site. The proposed use therefore can be classified as a warehouse which is permitted in the I one district by the zoning ordinance. With regard to vehicle access, the site is located off Wilcox Avenue as I stated. If you look at the property line dimensions, this is where the property line is. And uh, basically, all of the parking spaces are located within Wilcox Street right of way. This is an existing non-conforming situation that cannot be altered in any way. And this is an existing situation on the west side of Wilcox, which you also saw in the um class action fitness property that is immediately to the south of it that you reviewed not so long ago. With regard to pedestrian access, since already the parking spaces are within the public right of way, there is no uh, room for placement of a sidewalk. There is access to the building directly from the pavement over here. And a five feet uh, striped space is shown over here. So barriers free access is straight into the building. With regard to off-street parking, requirements are one space for every fifteen hundred square feet of floor area. Based on that requirement, this building needs two spaces. Um, the applicant had previously stated at the last meeting that the office space is basically for his use only. It's not technically a office where employees will be coming and going. There will be no auto repair conducted on the site and no employees. So the site has got no parking spaces on its own. Now, if you look at the site plan, there is a note over here. Um, on one of the sheets, there was a note on the other site plan sheet right here. It says two parking spaces provided. That note needs to be removed because these two spaces are not provided. They are located within the public right of way. They do not belong to the applicant, even though by right of use, this is the only building they serve, so that note really needs to be removed. At the last meeting, the planning commission expressed a desire to have the city break a portion of the right of way on Wilcox to correct the existing non-conformity. So some of the right of way where to be located along the west side of Wilcox, it would make this property, the one to its north, the one to its south, more conforming. Uh, this issue can be addressed only by the city council and the planning commission during its motion can actually suggest or to the city council if they would like to visit this to correct existing non-conformities. With regard to loading space, there is no room on the site for a loading space because the building literally occupies most of it. Uh, it is a warehouse. There is an overhead door right here. So it allows for new vehicles to be bought in through the store and out through that door. So a dedicated loading space is not really possible or functional for this site. With regard to trash removal, it's a low intensity site. So likely trash generated is minimal, but I would like the applicant to address how trash will be removed, even that minimal amount. With regard to landscaping, the site is almost entirely occupied by the building and pavement. There is a small landscape area over here, which the applicant is proposing to plant foxwood shrubs in. Currently, the landscape island goes all the way to here. That portion is going to be removed so they can have the overhead door to go in and out of the building. Um, landscape maintenance agreement language has been included on the plan. With regard to lighting, there is no information regarding proposed lighting on these plants and nothing shown on the facades either. So my suggestion is at least they submit manufacturer's touchy detail of what fixtures they're planning to put, even if it's backlit and that's fine. We can just like include a note. And if any fixture is going to be installed on the south side just for safety in this area, that needs to be shown. As to architecture, the existing building is not particularly attractive. It is split face block and painted block on the remaining sides and it's quite nondescript. The applicant is proposing changes that really enhances the appearance of the building. It's a metal panel wall system in gray and red. They are adding this detailed overhead door, a pedestrian entrance door. And if you look at the floor plan, there is also line of a roof overhang. Now, the problem is the required front yard setback in the I one district is twenty-five feet. This is an existing legal that isn't twenty-five feet between the building and the property line. This is an existing legal non-conforming building. It can remain as is. But the ordinance prohibits making the building more non-conforming. So addition of the roof overhang, even though it improves the appearance of the building, is increasing the non-conformity of the building and cannot be monitored. If you look at a site profile of the building, uh, let me see if I can get the site profile. Um I can't just I'm going to do a new share. And uh, if you would, give me something blocking the screen over here. I am going to see if I can find the other screen or excuse me for a minute. There. Sorry, sometimes it gets confusing. Now, if you look at the overhang that is shown over here, it's more of an architectural feature. So our recommendation is that this overhang be eliminated. It is not merely that it's it's simply not permitted by the ordinance because you're making the building more non-conforming. Building will still remain attractive. All the overhang services for providing a covered entrance to the front windows and the door. Building will still have the attractive facade which we think is with regard to signage, the plan notes a raised metal sign over here that will be administratively reviewed and approved. As discussed at the preliminary meeting, the applicant has indicated that there will be no parking on the narrow strip that is on this side of the building. There is a narrow strip of asphalt and the applicant will not be doing anything. There will be no repair of vehicles on site. That we can did address most of the concerns raised in our preliminary review letter. So it's a recommendation that the planning commission grant approval for Park Motors to be located at one-one-one-seven Wilcox, subject to four conditions. Correct notation on the site plan stating that zero parking spaces are being provided. Note regarding proposed method of crash removal, manufacturer's touchy detail for proposed light fixture. And finally, elimination of the roof overhang shown. These conditions need to be fixed on a revised set of plans that is submitted to us or our final administrative review. Uh, I would also add that the planning commission I would also add that the planning commission can request the city council to investigate the possibility of vacating street right of way on Wilcox to eliminate or reduce some of the existing non-conformities on the west side of this. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the planner from the commissioners? Is the petitioner with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Anything to add to the presentation just made?
I can make all the changes she suggested on the plan and and I'm ready to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. At this time, this item is scheduled for a public hearing. It is 8:50. I will open the public hearing and ask Sienna if she has received any written or electronic communication regarding this this proposed project.
I have not and there is no one on the call either.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll consider the public hearing held and closed at 8:51. Back to the commissioners, any questions you might have for either the planner or the petitioner? Hearing none, I would ask if there is a motion.
So moved.
So the mayor has made a motion, I assume, with the conditions as laid out by the planner?
Yes, thank you.
And who was supporting?
Yes.
Okay, supported by Patty. So the motion has been made by the mayor, supported by Patty. I will have the roll call, please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord? Lord?
Eric.
He's frozen. Oh, he was.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. You're all set. We wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hope you enjoyed the rest of the meeting, Robert.
Oh, thank you.
Right, the next item is number eight miscellaneous. Does anyone have anything to bring up to the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I got two things to say. One, I'm going to say as mayor of the city of Rochester, I just want to know that Dave Gasson is a respected member of the planning commission. And he's actually been around Rochester politics and government longer than I have, and there's not many people who can say that anymore. I just have the utmost respect for him. I respect all the planning commissioners, but David has been here for a long time. I have a lot of respect for him. And then just as on a personal note, I've known David Gasson personally as a friend over the years from city events and stuff. And again, I'll say the same thing personally. Have nothing but the utmost respect for Mr. Gasson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any, anything else, other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this is David Gasson. I I'll thank you for your kind words for both of you. And I think anyone that knows my character and how I approach my planning and the seriousness I take in it will know that what I put forward for consideration in making decisions is feel about a project, not about a person or anyone putting something together. And I disagree with what was said by Mr. Atala or Dr. Atala in that I have some bias towards. That is not the case.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you were subjected to that. Sometimes people make unusual decisions. And anyway, we move forward.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, again.
Mike, one other comment?
Yes.
And I hope, hope Mr. Hauser is not scared away from you. We'll call back for the next meeting.
No, as a, as a lawyer, we get that pretty regularly at work and at home, so it's fine.
All right, thank you.
I have, I have to say it's unusual for us here, but you know, like I said, we move on.
No, thank you.
Public comment, I'll open that up again. Sienna, just to make sure we don't have anybody waiting or anything that has come in?
We do not.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Blaine, city manager. If I could just make one note underneath the public comment that with our upcoming city council meeting on the 13th, staff will be recommending that our city council interview the two finalists for the master plan. So there'll be information that will be included in our public packet. But I just wanted, you know, I know the the planning commission will be working with, along with staff, whoever is selected. But so if there's any interest that the planning commission members might want to just watch the the upcoming city council meeting, which is on the 13th of July.
Have you identified the two finalists?
Sienna, what were the McKenna and?
Beckin and Rader.
What is the other one?
Beckin and Rader.
Okay, I don't know them, but.
Yeah. And again, this was, this was done after we completed our interviews of, I think it was what, five? Five finalists?
Okay, we appreciate the update.
I'll send out an invite, an email as well, just to add the reminder for you all when it's.
We appreciate that very much. Upcoming agenda items on on our agenda says August 3rd. We now have a meeting, tentative meeting on, what is it, July 26th?
I apologize. That is, I think it's August 3rd. I don't know. I think I want to say it's August 3rd. I hope I'm correct.
It's August 10th.
Okay, I'm thinking that it's July 6th. That's today. But in any case.
The only thing that would be on the July meeting would be this project that we heard tonight.
Correct.
They don't, if they don't get their submittal into the satisfaction of the administration, then they're on the August 3rd agenda.
Yes, and please note that both of the topics A and B, though they're both tentative, the date for submission is Friday, both of which state that they may bring in the items. That is also tentative because it's up to them. We actually have a bid opening for the city vestibule project, so that's also contingent upon who places a bid, obviously, for that project.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other business for the planning commission?
No, but I just wanted to say that I'm going to be on vacation on July 23rd, so.
What are we supposed to do? How can we go on? Thank you. Enjoy your vacation, Maureen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, Tom.
Goodbye.